My position. As council chose six members to bring in for interviews, one applicant did withdraw, so we ended up with five you have in front of you this evening, this afternoon, for interviews. As we work our way through, at the end, the meeting will be adjourned approximately at 6:30. We will have a half hour for individual deliberations. The meeting then will start up at seven o'clock to be able to have some dialogue and how you wish to bring on as your next city manager for the city of St. Paul. Unless there's any questions, we recommend that you work your way through the questions. Each candidate does have a half hour to answer these things, but we do have these interviews spaced fifteen minutes apart. So those watching at home may see some private space here a little bit next because waiting in between the time to make sure that we have the... We ran a little bit backwards along over the play of the joint. I guess about where you do be having first candidate?
I'd like to welcome Eric. Thank you for going through the process here. I'm going to turn the... I'm going to start the questions down at the right here and then we're just going to walk through it and relax if you need to take a drink of water or whatever, you know. Just be comfortable and we're just here to hope the interview goes well for you. So I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Thorson.
Eric, I've got the first question here for you, and that is, please tell us what interests you about this position and highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for this job.
I'm interested in the city manager position in here in North St. Paul for several reasons. The key one is the unique character of the community and the organization is a place that I would like to be aligned with and serve the community. By that, I mean it's unique. It has its own characteristics, its own downtown, its own separate history from the surrounding area. I came in last night and chatting with some people over at Max across down the way here, it was interesting because people said they were from North St. Paul. They didn't say they were from the cities or Twin Cities or the area. They said they were from here. And that speaks volumes to me. I love being in an area where people take civic pride and community pride. Having met now with your department heads, I can say that there's pride also continues on through the organization. There's a lot of local civic pride as well there. And that's something that interests me in being in a place that I can be long-term, that is known as its own entity and not just random suburbia. It's also a full-service city. That's important to me as well. As I've gone through my career experience, I've started in very small communities, fifteen hundred people. I've been administrator up to... And this community is up to twenty thousand people. I've wore all the hats. And so you take bits and pieces that you've learned from those stops, and it's very important to me that I can continue to utilize what I have learned in the next organization as well. So it's a great community, and it's one that when I saw was open, I had a jump at the chance to apply for because it's an area of the cities that I am somewhat familiar with and wish to serve.
Okay, Eric. Question number two. Describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff.
Building trust is absolutely key when it runs in any business, but in particular the private public sector. Favorite story is what, years ago, I... This is a career change for me going back to 2003 when I first ran for and was elected city council member in my hometown. Found it was a calling. It's a calling to serve. And if you're serving the public, the public has to have trust in you, elected officials have to have trust in you, and your staff has to have trust in you. So I start from square one where I have trust with them, and I explained to the department heads just now, follow some very basic rules, and that is no surprises. If there's something that's going to impact their departments, if something's going to impact how you need to... What information you need to do your jobs appropriately, you're going to hear from me first. You know, I'm not going to wait and say, "Yeah, I heard about that a while ago," and find that out about. So we're going to continue that trust because it may be unpopular opinion. It may be information you don't want to hear, but you're going to hear it from me. It's important of that. My expectation likewise is it goes the other way as well, that, you know, if something's going to impact the staff, the departments, our ability to serve the public, and you hear about it, you notify me as well of that as well, so we can develop that trust. The trust comes through communication, and I have very frequent communication with staff, and I frequent communication. My expectations as city manager that would be that we set up some time that it's appropriate for each one of you to meet one-on-one, depending on your work schedules, so that's fully understand what it is you're hoping to accomplish as elected officials in the city of yours as well, and to be able to present what I can do to help move those things along, both with staff and as policies as well. And the last thing is, if I say it, then do it. And you can never go back if, you know, say, "Yeah, I'll get that to you by Tuesday," and Wednesday rolls around, you don't have it yet, I've lost trust in you. So it's being able to follow through with the expectations as established through our communication.
Thank you. Describe a time when you made a mistake at work. Never do that. How did you deal with this situation, and what was the outcome?
Specifically, there is a shared ride service that we have in Onalaska, and there's a triennial review required of that because we take FTA funds for that public transit service. And the finance director was responsible for that, retired after forty years, and he'd been doing it for a long, long time. And we hired a new finance director who went to the training, remote training for FTA, had done the report, and we're just waiting for the results to come back. Results were came back. I invited, say, when do we need a response back to this? And got a response back saying, "Buy your next triennial review," which of course is three years. Fantastic. Turns out that there was two parts to that study. One part was due a week and a half from now, and the second part was due the triennial review. So I asked a question, received an answer, and fortunately it was the wrong answer. That's on me. That's because it was new to me and something that I had not experienced before. So reached out to staff who had the information, where was that information available, reached out to the FTA to extend the deadline, reached out to elected officials to notify them of what had happened. So owned the mistake, found a new timeline to make up for the mistake, found out the information needed to provide to the FTA in timely fashion, and got that done. But hiding your face or pointing blame elsewhere doesn't accomplish anything. It's a whole lot easier to move forward when mistakes are happening, owning up to it, and moving on.
Thank you, Eric. I have question four. How would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
Diversity, inclusion, and equity is finally, I think, something on the forefront that we've been talking about for a long time, but it really haven't been, you know, taking full steps to do that. And what's important is to understand that the community needs to be reflected in the organization that serves the community. And that's different wherever you go. So what I can control internally is the best place to start, and I've done that through our hiring practices in other organizations. Are we closing out opportunities by people by not having... By having very strict policies or having requirements in our job description that we don't really follow through, or certifications, or education? Or are we looking at job descriptions and requests for, you know, hiring positions that talk about skills instead? So however you get those skill sets, be able to fill that. So we've taken with... Within the organization, which is where I'm currently at in Onalaska, fifty percent female, fifty percent male, we at least have, the department has now matching that as well, which historically was not. So it's just taking steps to do to make sure that your organization reflects what you can. It's also understand that voices need to be heard in the community, and the voices have traditionally not been heard. It's convenient to say, "Well, you know, the office hours doesn't work out," or "That's... You're not an important voice in the community." You know, "You're not the name of so-and-so." So I have an open-door policy, and I'm glad to say that, you know, the open-door policy means that my doors close a lot because people are comfortable coming to me and expressing their opinions as to how they're not seeing services being provided or the needs that they may have. And it's incumbent on me as city manager to listen objectively, actively listen, ask probing questions, do the research, and provide solutions necessary for that. I don't have all the answers. I can't have all the answers, but I can find the answers and I can give information to this body that you may need to know, that we have restrictions in place or we have barriers in place that are not conducive to, you know, every resident, every citizen feeling included. And so what can we do, you know? And the information that I can gather is the information that I'll provide.
Thank you.
Eric, welcome.
Thank you.
A question I have. Describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations, and then describe how these... How building these types of relationships benefited the community or organization you worked for.
In Onalaska, we do have a sanitary sewer utility. We collect it, but we don't... And we transmit it, but we don't treat it. The city of La Crosse treats it on a regional basis for us. And we do have longstanding agreements with the city of La Crosse, for example. That agreement expired, and we spent over three years trying to negotiate a new agreement with the city of La Crosse for the treatment of our regional sewage. That included doing some research on, you know, how much would it cost to go on our own, build our own. Did Wisconsin D not even allow us to discharge into the Mississippi River separately? And working with the other bodies. It took that long because there was different perspectives that each unit of government had as to what that was. Both communities felt, as elected officials and residents, they were being taken advantage of by the old agreements. And so the individual requests by both Onalaska and La Crosse were not feasible and not in anybody's best interest. So it took a matter of communication, communicating with the elected officials, communicating with staff, and communicating with other regional partners who would be responsible, also signing agreements with them, to really reach an agreement that made sense for everybody. Because again, regionally, if you don't support each other, you're competing against each other, and competition is more expensive than cooperation. So and that absolutely would have been the case that way. But it did take three years of negotiations to get to an agreement that served the regional interest. I think it's a little different than the experiences that many communities have around here, which do, from my understanding, you know, how utilities are working together and at times. That's not necessarily the case there, but hopefully we've turned that around by cooperatively working together. But it takes building relationships, and it takes trust, and it takes time to do that, to work with other areas.
All right. Back to me here. Question number six. In your current or previous role, what is the most difficult decision you have had to make, and how did you come to that decision?
Out of respect of the person, I won't get into too much details, but certainly when you get to the point of having to terminate somebody that you're close with and you're friendly with, or reach a separation, that's the hardest part of doing that. I mentioned before, you know, it's a calling to work in the public sector. We can all earn more money and with less issues in the public, in the private sector than in the public sector. But we do it because we love to do it. We love to serve. And knowing that about your employees, and when you have that issue, that they still love to serve, they're still a good employee, but you know, you followed through the HR process, you've established expectations, you've done a performance improvement plan, but ultimately it's not in the best interest of the public anymore for that employee to be there. It's hard on an individual basis when you have to do that, but it's also hard on an organizational basis because relationships are built as a team, you know, within the department heads and within departments themselves. And it's difficult because you can't really disclose everything about, you know, why, you know, and not finger point, but just continue to move forward cooperatively. So it means it's organizationally, it's the right thing to do at times, but it's also very difficult because they're still dealing human-to-human and, you know, friend-to-friend in some cases, but, you know, having to make that decision, it's tough to do.
Okay, Eric. Number seven. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
In five years in the city of Onalaska, I've had five step increases based on performance every year. I've had my contract extended twice every year. So it's an organization that I really appreciate and quite frankly, wished to still be at. But through the contract extension, it is apparent that the council will be looking at perhaps reorganizing in a different direction from city administrator and looking at some other organizational study styles there. And so to avoid it being a public debate or an issue where they're not making changes based on what's best for the city, they're making it based, perhaps based on individual, I, even though I had a contract extension, offered a resignation and to move forward for them so that they could purely look at what's best in the best interest of that. So I am coming to you at a point where I am employed through September 30th. I have no job duties right now through the city that way, but I believe strongly in making sure that the city manager, city administrator is the right person for the right fit. And if it no longer becomes that way, then it's incumbent on me to move on. So it's the toughest decision I've had to make for me and my family and professional career, but it's also the right decision to do because if you no longer have faith in the position, then why be there?
Thank you. What have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
I believe recently completed here, but in McFarland and in Onalaska, being able to do the employee compensation and class study, to do a review for the staff. It was significant because, again, people do this because they want to serve, but you can't take advantage of that either. You have... Still have to be a place that is a choice place for employees to work at and, you know, try to drive morale forward as well. So leading the council to fund not just a compensation, hiring a consultant to do a study, but also then fund the results of that said study, which could mean some people getting raises that others may not be comfortable with because it's competitive. You want to be that way. Been able to go through that twice successfully, fund successfully, you know, wage changes to be competitive, doing it with employee input throughout so that it wasn't a surprise, and funding those changes so that we can see morale increase wherever that has happened that way. Because again, the organization is key. People have to be motivated to be here. They provide good service. The highest level service at the lowest possible cost is key, but you can't take advantage of that and do it in a fair manner. I think it's significant because then we can continue to support and provide service to the public with employees that are happy to be there and their morale is good.
Thank you.
All right. Question nine. North St. Paul has experienced some recent turnover with the city manager position. If hired, what do you feel needs to be addressed right away?
Similar question to what I answered with the department heads, but slightly different. Stability was the answer when I asked the department heads, what are they looking for when it comes to a city manager in place? And that was the answer given almost universally. And so if stability is the answer, and stability is what I aim to provide, how do I do that? What accomplished by that? My first goal as a city manager would be to meet individually with all the staff, you know, do the research about the staff, build relationships with them, why are they here, what do they do, what are their needs for their departments, how do they provide service, how does the public perceive that service, do the same meeting individually with you, getting to know everybody as council members as well, what are your initiatives, what do you like about the city, what needs improvement to the city, and reporting back to you with a pathway forward that isn't just for the officials that are here at that time, but also for the city manager is to say, "This is the pathway forward. This is how your manager is going to be here. I can provide these solutions for the next five years or more, hopefully. I intend this to be my last stop, and hopefully it all goes well." It will be. But you have to learn how the machine works before you can try to improve the machine. And coming in here with initiatives and policies to say, "I can fix this," or "You need to do that," is just a mistake. You know what you need to do, and it's my job to help provide you with those solutions. So we need to have that relationship built before we can do that. But it's communication and trust, and it is taking the time to build those relationships that would generate that stability. You need to be able to trust me as your city manager that I will be here and I'm not leaving. I won't do anything that will cause me to leave.
Why should North St. Paul City Council select you as their next city manager?
I think I offer a uniqueness. I mentioned that question number one as well. Beyond having a drive to serve the public, everyone in this position and interviewing will tell you that as well. You know, it's important. It's a stressful job, and you have to want to do it. But I've also been on your seat. I've also been the elected official, and I've had the calls about barking dogs or cracked sidewalks, or someone's parked in front of my house, or any of the other issues that seem mundane, but also the concerns about crime, the concerns about public safety. You know, are the streets plowed in time? Who do they call first? They call you first, don't they? You know, when you're out shopping or you're out trying to have dinner, people are like, "Hey, you're so-and-so," and I got to tell you about this. So I've been in that position, and I think that's going to be unique for me and why I say North St. Paul should hire me as city manager, because I've done both sides. You know, I know a staff needs to be supported. I know how to communicate with staff to support that staff. But I also know what issues you have and what issues you may be supportive as well, and how to help deal with that. I'll go back to, you know, 2003, when I was sworn in as Spogian. We were in the midst of... First thing we had to do was vote on a development agreement for his major redevelopment project that the previous council had been debating for two years, and all of a sudden, here's the agreement. Go, you know, sit, vote iranay. We were obviously mid-budget cycle that way. So I was waiting for this beam of light of knowledge from the heavens above to say, "Here's how you do your job." It never came. You know, I had to do the research. I had to find out. I had to find the resources that I could do that job. And having been that elected official, I am that resource for you to help accomplish what it is that you need to accomplish or answer questions you may face in a way that is respectful and dignified because I've been there. I also know that. So I do have the experience. I've run a full city, up to twenty thousand people, full-service city, up to twenty thousand people. I've been the administrator in positions where, you know, the heat is on, the most public face of all the staff. I enjoy it. I've experienced doing it. I love doing it, and I would love to do it here for the next, how many years until I get to retire, if you'll have me.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just follow up on number one question, and I don't know if I heard right or not, but key qualifications that make you the best person for this job?
Okay. So key qualifications, similar to how I finalized that last question. Have been a full city administrator in cities large and small for eleven years. So, you know, I've been in that role and position that you're looking at as city manager. I have the master's degree in public and nonprofit administration or public administration, and I have had the elected office experience. So those are the three things I think that make me stand out and the experience I think I can provide here in North St. Paul.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have about five minutes, and as long as we're consistent with all candidates, if a candidate does finish early, hopefully you feel it would be appropriate if the candidate has any questions of you, unless there's any other follow-up questions the council may have.
Any other follow-up questions? If not, do you have any questions for us?
For me to keep it under thirty minutes for ten questions is a miracle, so I appreciate that. I apologize if I've gone too fast. So if there is anything I said too fast, please follow up. Otherwise, I do have a question for you.
All right.
Okay. My question is, what is the number one thing you are looking for in a city manager?
Experience is really important to me. The last two lacked a little city manager experience. So I appreciate people on-the-job training, but this is such an important role, and we've been through some turmoil. And like, I agree with the stability piece. We have great crew. We have great workers, but they need a leader. So that's important to me.
Yeah, I would say looking for someone to provide stability and to be here long-term, that this isn't something that they're getting into and then realizing that this is something that's, I mean, over my head, or a stepping stone for a bigger position somewhere else. So...
If I may, why here? I follow that question that way. I did have family live in St. Paul on Grotto near Lake Como, also in Stillwater in the area. I did go to school here in the Twin Cities, but this sort of sector of the Twin Cities area is really where I'm most familiar with. So I've been through On 36. I've seen the snowman and gone back and forth between. So, you know, I have not lived here outside of going to school here, but this is the area that I've always really enjoyed in terms of quality of life as well. So moving here and providing that stability is something that I'm looking forward to.
And I would echo same thing, stability and relationships. You know, for someone to be able to build relationships, not only within the community, but within the organization here, that's important for me.
Yeah, I would probably echo, you know, stability and relationships. And for myself, I believe that, you know, someone who can really foster, you know, some community, really deep community engagement. We're a small community, and I think, you know, we're changing a lot, so just having, making sure that community has their voice heard and their input is there as we continue to develop.
So not to echo everybody, but... No, I... That goes without said, but I'm also looking for a strong collaborative leader that will empower the divisionals, the folks underneath him to go out and do their jobs.
With that said, I've only got a couple of minutes. I just want to say, being from Wisconsin, we don't hold that against you. If you're a Packer fan or a Vikings fan, you don't have to be one or the other. Although we Minnesotan, you know, we would love to have a Super Bowl at some time. So...
At some point.
But thank you. Thank you, and I wish you the best of luck.
A pleasure. You have a tough decision, and good luck to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just saw a survey not too long ago. Is the handshake dead? And for the most... And for the most part, the answer was no.
Everybody okay with how it went? Anything different you want to see or do?
Low.
They're low.
Onalaska.
Onalaska. Yes, I know where that is.
Just over the bridge from Minnesota, right before you get to La Crosse.
Yeah. They have the hockey. Go to hockey down there.
In between Oktoberfest and Apple Annie Day.
Oh, now I know where it is.
Now you know where it is.
Okay, next one.
We can start a little earlier if you want. I mean, we can do whatever the wishes are.
So we, right now, the next one's coming in at...
Quarter two.
Quarter two, yep. And that person is in the lobby waiting.
I'm ready to keep driving.
Okay. Is that local minutes here?
Three thirty. Three thirty.
Mm-mm. Does not... Does not look like Camille.
That's not Camille.
That's not Camille.
One more time.
Who is it? Is that Camille?
It's Ken. Kenneth.
Oh, never mind.
Oh.
That is definitely not Camille.
Oh, she's coming out of the panel interviews, I see.
Hi.
Hi.
No, my back hurts.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I should all get a standing chamber.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
You want to start right away, then? She's got a half an hour, then, so stop at 4:05.
Want to take a breath?
Yeah, do you want to take a breath?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, I am.
Explain to her about the 10 questions in the 30 minutes.
Want to go ahead and introduce and go ahead and see the process?
You bet. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This is your candidate number two, and you have 30 minutes to answer 10 questions. And if there's time at the end, then you have opportunity to ask a question of the council. And otherwise, they'll just go through in round-robin format, and they have the same questions that will be asked to all the candidates, and there may be questions for maybe some further clarification. But otherwise, you should be good to go.
Welcome, Camille.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to this side of the table.
Okay.
So let's just start from there and go this way.
Okay.
And then back again.
Okay, sounds good.
Just relax, and you need to take a drink, or, you know, whatever. Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, first question. Please tell us what interests you about this position, and highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for this job.
Great, thank you. Very nice to meet you, and thank you for this opportunity. What excites me the most about North St. Paul is really this community. A few, a couple of months ago, I came here for my Economic Development Certificate program, which I've completed now, but came here and met the community and really all the different developments that are here. So that was my first true interaction. I knew about North St. Paul, but really true interaction with the community, really getting to know the character. I have met a few residents since then, the superintendent, I've met the local business association president, the historical society president, and a few others. And one thing that they all talk about is, one, how fantastic the staff is here, how great the council is, the leadership, and the community pride. And not every city has that, and that's what really draws me to North St. Paul and this position coming open. When I came here a couple of months ago, I didn't know that this position was available. So once I saw that it was open, I was very interested. There's a lot of character here. Like I had mentioned earlier, the community pride is huge. The residents care about this community, and they want to see it continue to be a successful community, a community that will continue to prosper and thrive, and I want to be a part of that. I have a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy and passion to be in the public sector and to work with community, and so I'd be so excited to do that here with North St. Paul residents and the community. My background, so I'll start with the most recent, like my education. I'm currently at Hamlin University. I graduate in December with my master's in public administration and master's in business administration. I initially went to Hamlin to get my master's in public administration, just to gain more knowledge on policy, the law, being a public administrator, leadership in the public sector. But then I decided to get my MBA as well, just to better understand strategy in alignment with the finance. So I've learned a lot about strategic management, how to allocate resources, creating a strategic vision and priorities for a community. I also have a certificate in economic development, but also crisis communications, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace. I've worked for the largest county in Minnesota, Hennepin County, where I am now. I've worked for one of the largest communities and one of the most diverse communities in the Midwest. I've also worked for the fourth-largest county in the country, and so I've just seen a lot of public-sector organizations, what they do well, what they don't do well. And I can bring all of that knowledge and training and put it right to work right away, right here in North St. Paul, just to continue to build off of our success, continue to grow our leadership team, and build a strong team. I know there's been a lot of instability within City Hall the last couple of years, I mean, with this change in city management, but then also COVID-19, civil unrest, and much, and other challenges. And so I'd love to bring all of my knowledge here to help this community and the staff. So, yeah. You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Question two, describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff.
Yeah. I'm a big believer in building relationships, and so that's what I would do right away, is wanting to build a relationship with each of you and collectively. The same would be with staff, is learning, listening, leaning on their expertise, their institutional knowledge. Many of them have lived here for a long time. Many of them have worked here for a long time. I definitely want to listen and learn and collaborate. I'm very much a collaborator. But I also want to learn about the strategic priorities of the council as well, what you're looking for in the future for this community, and making sure that we, as staff, are in alignment with that. But building trust would be through just getting to know you, and however you would like to do that, whether it's meeting for coffee every now and then, or just regular phone calls, but I want to definitely earn your trust and get to know each of you better. Yeah.
Okay. Describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with the situation, and what was the outcome?
I'm not going to say that I've never made a mistake. It's hard to pick or to think about a mistake off the top of my mind right now. What I, I will start kind of explaining it, explaining kind of my process, I guess, for a mistake that I may make, and then if I can think of a good example, I'll bring it up here. But for me, if I make a mistake, I own it. I'm very transparent about that. I take all accountability for any mistake that I do make, whether it's minor or major. I think it's really important to own it. So I, of course, try my very best to not make mistakes, but I'm sure they have happened in the past, and just trying to think of, maybe I'm trying to think of a major one, and there really just hasn't been a major one that I can think of. But I just know that my character is really to be honest about it and to bring it up right away, if I know that I've made it. And then try to, of course, correct and figure out and bring options about what we can do to fix it. But I can't think of a specific mistake at this point, other than maybe a typo that I probably made once or twice. Yeah.
No worries.
Okay. Thank you. So I have question four. How would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community? Yeah. This is really important to me, and I know that North St. Paul is a diverse community and continues to grow into being a more diverse community. We have a lot of schools here in our community, and so, of course, we have a lot more families, too, that are very diverse and moving here. I think it's really important to engage. I think it's important to work outside of these four walls, if you will, and be out in the community. Try to reach out to the different cultural groups that we may have in our community, and make sure we're having ongoing conversation. I have experience with that, working in Brooklyn Park, even working at the county as well, but in Brooklyn Park more so, because it is such a culturally rich community. A lot of diff, we have a very high immigrant population. It's majority people of color who live there. And that was really critical, is making sure that we were having ongoing conversations with those residents, to make sure they were meeting their needs, and that they knew what we were doing, and that we could, so whenever we needed to work in their neighborhood, or we needed some input from them, they knew who we were, and we made sure that we weren't putting up barriers for them either. We wanted to make sure it was a welcoming community. And so that experience that I have, the tactics and strategies that we use there, I would bring here as well. I'm sure we may have some of those strategies. I always think of staff as community engagement experts, because we're all really community engagement. We're all out there, or should be out there, engaging with our community. So I would bring the same knowledge that I have there here, and make sure that we are making sure our City Hall is welcoming, making sure we're meeting people where they're at. And if we don't have the perspective or understanding of a certain cultural community, I'll make sure we go and get that, and make sure that they're at the table. So that's how I would handle that. Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of governments or organizations. Then describe how building these types of relationships benefited the community or the organization that you work for.
Yeah. I do have a lot of experience with that. I feel like throughout my career, especially in the public sector, it's been working with the state or city, city and state, neighboring jurisdictions. One example I can think of off the top of my head is, I was part of the Blue Line Coalition in Brooklyn Park, and so that was a coalition made up of several cities that were going to be along the Blue Line extension from Target through, to Brooklyn Park. And so that was a coalition that we really tried, well, we were advocating for light-rail funding, making sure the state reps were listening to us, and helping us bring light-rail to our communities, but also thinking creatively about how can we get attention? How can we market this? How can we make sure that we continue to be at the forefront, so nobody forgets us and that we're not an afterthought? And so that was a lot of collaboration across jurisdictions. There was even a branding effort, where we had to work with different cities on a new brand for the light-rail corridor. So that's one example I can think of. I think in this position, one thing I would do is build those partnerships with the school district, for example. So the superintendent would be somebody I would have a regular meeting with. I went to the Rotary Meeting on Friday. I would continue to do that in this position. I also think it's important to have a strong relationship with our chamber, so the St. Paul Area Chamber. I've spoken with B. Kyle, the CEO, and so building a relationship there, looking for opportunities to bring businesses, especially to our main street, and how to retain businesses, and looking for money to keep them here and helping them. And so I think, for me, it's all about relationship-building with our partners, and even the neighboring communities, Maplewood, Oakdale, meeting with those city managers and seeing how we can, we're always stronger together. So, meeting with them on a regular basis, just to find out what's going on in their communities, how that could impact us. And then also, that, I think, would help me keep a pulse on what's going on to update you as well, about what's coming, what could be affecting us. So that's my experience and what I would do in this position as far as working across jurisdictions.
Thank you.
All right. Question number six. In your current or previous role, what is the most difficult decision you've had to make, and how did you come to that decision?
Okay. Hmm. I think I'm going to have to do kind of what I did earlier with the mistake question. There's definitely been lots of decisions that have been challenging, but I think I'll start with talking about the process, and I'll share one example that I can think of right now. When it comes to making a difficult decision, I think it's really important to get input first. So whoever is going to be impacted by the decision, I think it's really important to get their input first, and listen, and... get their input first and listen and see if I need to do additional research, if I don't have good information in front of me. But one example that I can use would be around COVID-19. We all in government had to deal with COVID-19 and budget restraints. One thing I had mentioned to staff just now in a meeting is we had to decide where to cut. And so I was part of the senior management team at Brooklyn Park, and a tough decision that we had to make is, okay, where can we cut? And it was thinking about our strategic plan, our strategic priorities, and then making the decision about, okay, if we were to cut this area, would this take us off base? Would it not help us advance and achieve our goals? And so it's never easy to lay off anyone. It's never easy to cut. But, so that was the most difficult decision. But having that strategic plan, thinking about what's best for the community is really what led to us making the decision that we made. And so that's an example I'll share. But it's always about getting input for me, about who's going to be impacted and making sure that they're heard, and then making the consideration from there and seeing if we need extra information or whatnot.
Number seven. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
I feel that the best way I can answer this is that I'm always coming from a place of thinking of what's best for residents and for the community. I think I'm a selfless leader and person. It's never about me. It's always about what's best for the organization, for the community. I'm trying to think of an example. But I feel in general, every day, that's I'm working with integrity and transparency. I'm trying to think, well, yeah, I can't think of one example, but I just feel like I'm always constantly thinking about, is what I'm doing in the best interest of the community, whether it's the decision that I'm making or the work that I'm doing? Does that answer the question? Okay.
Number eight. What have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
I think the, to me, communication has always been key. And I think with, when it comes to strategic planning, articulating that strategy to staff has always been very important, and that's been a role that I've played, even in my current role. It's constantly thinking about, how can we connect the dots? How can we pull things together? How can we make people understand and feel that their role is part of the bigger picture? And I feel like I've done that, I've been in that role throughout my career, and it's made a significant difference. When I think back to Brooklyn Park, we had a lot of challenges as it relates to, well, one, having a very diverse community, high crime, and it was always constantly thinking creatively about how can we bring the community together? How can we learn? How can we have our community learn about other cultures, learn about how to work better together? And it was through different strategies, ideas that I had, that really helped make the difference for communities. And in Brooklyn Park specifically, I was really building that communications department from the ground up. We didn't have it before. It was really my position and one other person, and really working with the departments on figuring out, how can we have better messaging? How can we have better engagement with our community? We were able to consolidate some staff under one umbrella, hire a couple of extras, other staff, to make sure that we had effective communication to our community, because that was very important, just for them to stay engaged and informed about what is going on in our community and how they can get involved. So I'd say that's one example of a big difference that I made, a significant difference that I'd made for an organization.
Thank you.
All right. Got question nine. North St. Paul has experienced some recent turnover with the city manager position. If hired, what do you feel needs to be addressed right away?
I think right away, the first thing I would do is really listen to the staff about what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses? How can we continue to build on our strengths? And then what can we do to improve our weaknesses? But that would be the first thing that I would do. The second thing that I would do is wanting to work with you all potentially, well, not potentially, but hopefully, in a retreat in the beginning of the year to identify strategic priorities for 2023, and make sure that's articulated clearly to staff. Eventually, I think it would be great to also talk about a community plan, maybe a five, 10-year community plan, strategic plan, where we'd have some engagement with community about what they want to see, how they want to see North St. Paul in 10 years. I think that would be really helpful. Like I said, I've spoken to a few residents who they, they want to be engaged, there's a lot of community pride, and so I think it would be great to have them involved in a community plan that we could work together and give a roadmap to our staff, too, about where to go, so.
Why should North St. Paul City Council select you as the next city manager?
I have, I have a lot of passion for community. North St. Paul has a lot of character. It wouldn't be for any city that I'd want to be a city manager for. I think this community really has a lot going for it, and I want to continue to help build on these, the success, help continue to grow the community. I have a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy. I'm ready to hit the ground running. I have a lot of training and experience that I can bring right away and put to use here at North St. Paul. And so I think I'd be a great candidate. I'd be, do a really great job for you. And so I'd be honored if you chose me to be your city manager, so.
Thank you.
That was all 10 questions.
Okay. Did I make it?
You did.
Nice.
Is there any follow-up questions from any of the council members?
Oh, thank you for asking. The twins are good.
They're old, they're big now.
Yes, they're six.
We're not talking Minnesota twins.
Oh, I was going to say, they won five in a row.
Oh, thank you.
Been on Channel 11.
Thank you. Yeah, they're doing well. Gosh, I was so huge on Channel 11. But yes, they've grown since then. But yeah, they're six and a half. Yeah, they're great. I know they love all the activities that we have here in the community, the car show. They love snowmen, so I can't wait to see the snowman, especially in the wintertime. They would love that. So yeah, I think this community just has so many activities, too, fun activities, that I think they would, they would really enjoy it here, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
What's the top three priorities right away that you'd want the city manager to tackle?
Well, you're going to be looking at maybe three new faces. You know, you realize that with the election. I'm hoping I'm going to be on there, but I don't know. So that might be a challenge. What was the question again, the priorities or what?
Yeah, the top.
It's not so easy being on this side, is it?
Yeah, top three priority projects or challenges, yeah.
Yeah, just to keep the momentum going, this has been a really strong team. And, you know, we're being noticed throughout the whole state of how this used to be a little sleepy little town. We're not a sleepy little town anymore. So we want to keep the momentum going. So that's a high priority for me. And I like the community engagement, and I know our town has changed, and it's important to engage all the voices, and I do agree with that.
I'll just share one. Time and I continue to focus on our capital improvement plan. We're an old, older community, and that's been neglected for many years, and we kind of got a late start on that. So but just we're seeing that in the condition of our roads and infrastructure.
And I would, I would agree with all those, and, you know, stability is for me, relationships, you know, working with staff, being able to work with the staff, be able to work with the community, you know, that's a priority for me.
Yeah, I think, you know, I would agree with a lot of what everyone has said already. And, yeah, I think one thing is community engagement for me, especially as we continue moving into redevelopment and our community is changing and that, you know, everyone's reflected in those changes.
Wow, it's really tough to go to the end.
It was worse than at the end.
Everything they said. No, the only, the only thing, I jotted down like four, and I went, check, 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 check. The only other thing that was really, that I want to continue to focus on is just the continued development of downtown and finding, finding businesses that fit the needs and the services that are continued growing downtown environment needs.
Yeah. Would you say that these are issues that keep you up at night, or are there other issues that keep you up at night about North St. Paul?
All, all of the above.
Okay.
My hair goes on fire, and he's lost his hair. Just kidding.
Wow!
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. No, I just, there's a lot that keeps me, you know, public safety is number one. We had that horrible incident on Friday night, or Thursday night. We were out having a picnic with our police officers, and they all had to leave, and who thought it was a fire? Well, it was more than a fire. So, I mean, it's, it's creeped in in our St. Paul, and it's unfortunate. But, yeah, there's this, the public safety and just the crime, and we've got a great police chief, and we've got people in place, but it's, it's a concern of mine.
Well, I sleep very well at night. But sticking to the capital improvement plan, you know, when there's water main breaks, our public works director, they probably don't sleep so well because they have to get up and deal with that stuff. Sometimes it's in February when it's 20 below and, or in August when it's, you know, hot and humid, so.
I would say, you know, public safety is probably number one, you know, knowing that people are going to bed safe and, but another one is our infrastructure, too. You know, I think we need, we're having these 100-year rains now, and, you know, we're prone, some parts of the city are prone to flooding, and, you know, it could be one of those things that you wake up in the middle of the night and wonder if, you know, if there's a car underwater or what have you, so, things like that. Back at you.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of things keep me up at night, but, you know, some things that I would probably say is, you know, there's a lot happening in terms of redevelopment. It's moving quickly. I think our city is growing, the economic development is starting, you can start to see that. I just, and what concerns me is that we're not including everyone, particularly those that are most vulnerable. So that could be older adults, people of color, people with low incomes, and we have a naturally occurring affordable housing in this community. And so just maintaining some of those things that our current residents or other residents may need.
I agree with everybody.
Okay. And the CIP, the infrastructure, the roads, the pipes, all of that, really important for development. So I, I'm, I get that being really important, and of course, public safety, of course. Let's see, well, I don't know if we have time. I want to be respectful. I have another question.
You have about two minutes.
Okay. Who would be your ideal candidate for city manager? Like, who's the ideal person?
Me? No? It's important, I think. This is an important job. I don't take it lightly. It's a serious decision that we're going to, about to make. We've got to have a leader and a collaborator and a good person and getting our community engaged and all the, all the.
We're trying to answer that question today. We got five people we're interviewing, but just looking for someone who's a good leader, who has good leadership qualities, that are honest, transparent, and will provide stability and hopefully is here for a long period of time and is not just looking at this as an opportunity, as a stepping stone to advance their career.
Similar in connection, connection with the community, connection with the staff. We have a long history here in our St. Paul, so it's important that that person connects with, with all those.
Yeah, I would just second that. The relational piece, to me, is really critical.
Yeah, I, and, I'm looking, strong, experienced, collaborative leader that's going to empower the staff, the plans, and being in the community for a long time.
Good.
Well, I can, and I want to say that I can do all of that. I bring a lot of, a wealth of experience. Marketing communications is something that I think I'm the only candidate that probably brings that. And so I definitely am already an ambassador for North St. Paul. I have my PIN, so. But I would just be so thrilled and honored to serve you all in this community, and so thank you again for your time.
Thank you. That was Craig's class.
Really strong people and a truck and a chain.
I looked up, I looked at your, it's like, I knew I was late. It's like, is Lisa's car there? And it was gone. I saw those big giant, it's like, how did you get those up there?
Yeah, we, my neighbor helped with his truck, and then he had like a big old chain that's specific for hauling big logs, so.
Cool.
And then, yeah, he helped me out with that. A couple friends. It was not easy.
No, they're huge.
Yeah.
I'll make sure I get a time for the next one. You know, make that time whenever certain people know, when it starts.
Oh, okay, sure.
I'll make sure I say, okay, if it's, whatever's there. I wrote down 408, but I probably should have said something. I wish you had.
Oh, yeah. Those are the, the mayor's.
Yeah, I think he did say 405. He started it. She said, okay, good. I'll make sure I announce it that way. Everybody's out in the same area. I love that. I'll make sure I announce the time when we start, so how much time we have, so we're all in the same.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm mistaken.
Ah.
Can you give kind of about five minutes to start at, uh, 4:20 or 4:15 or? 4:20?
Hello, everybody. I'm Ken. As if you didn't know.
I'll turn over to Mark.
Are we all ready to go?
Uh.
Or do you want to wait a couple of minutes? Whatever your wishes.
We can go.
Okay. All right, we have candidate number three in front of you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, the council will be asking you 10 questions similar to the other candidates. There may be opportunities if they want a little more information, they may add, ask some follow-up questions. You basically have 30 minutes to answer the 10 questions. And if there is, happen to be any time at the end, you have an opportunity to ask the council some questions. Otherwise, without further ado, we'll start into the interview process.
Do you have a time, end time?
End time will be... For, uh...
Four forty-four?
Yep, four, yep.
Four thirty-nine?
Okay.
Welcome Eric, uh, or Ken, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Ken, welcome Ken. Thank you for taking the time to, to interview with us. And I'm gonna, we're gonna go from right to left, so I'm gonna start down at the right end here.
First question here, please tell us what interests you about this position and highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for this job.
Well, there's, I suppose there's several motivations. Obviously, I've gone into this profession with the ability, the idea and the, that, um, to be flexible in terms of the different things that I get to be engaged in, involved in. I, I, uh, I have the type of mind in which I, I desire to, you know, be able to work on a variety of different things. So, that's, uh, something that's always been very appealing to me, which, you know, 10 years ago, when I was drawn to this profession, that was what appealed. I think, um, one of the things that I would say really, uh, brings me to see North St. Paul as a real opportunity is just the opportunity where growth and development is happening. Um, it's very appealing to me and professionally, it's the type of work I like to be involved in. I have experience doing several different housing, uh, development projects, working with tax increment financing, basically working on, well, gap financing, if you will, for a variety of different projects, uh, working with industry, labor, um, uh, working on downtown revitalization. And, uh, I think, you know, uh, looking at where this community is going and the activity that's going on, this is the place for me, uh, to be able to put those skills to use. Personally, I, I find a community like North St. Paul to really fit what it is I'm looking for at this point in my life. I've come to, uh, realize I'm not, I'm not a rural person. I, I like, uh, the convenience of, of being in the city and having the services and actually like seeing a neighbor next door, which right now, my closest neighbor is like a quarter mile away, so. So, uh, that's one of the other reasons and I want to live where I work, you know. So, you know, choosing North St. Paul isn't just choosing a career, it's choosing my next home. And, uh, I've, I've given it a lot of thought. I, I don't just apply for every position that's out there. And I, I am comfortable where I am in Scandia. They treat me well. But, you know, on that personal and professional level, I just, I don't have those opportunities.
Okay, welcome. Um, number two, describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff.
Uh, trust comes from good communication and transparency. I don't keep secrets that I don't have to keep. I, I try to be forthright and provide information. Sharing information is, is the first thing that creates a culture of mistrust and, and it, it just leads to unpleasantness. I want to be your information resource. Uh, you have a question, I want to get you an answer. Uh, you want to see a document, I want to get it to you. You know, that's what I see is important. I want to keep you regularly informed, at least an email a week is, uh, you know, something I'm accustomed to. But obviously, those bigger things, you know, that imminent emergency that people are gonna come and talk to you about or something that's just gonna bring up questions, I want to make sure you know what's going on and have an idea of how to respond to that and, and give you the tools to be able to deal with those situations. I want to, uh, make sure that I maintain a, um, uh, consistent accountability to you, that you, you know, um, and you see my deliverables and I make it to you on time. I want to deliver you quality work. Uh, it's very important to me, uh, that what is delivered to you is accurate and, and punctual and, and informs you so that you feel comfortable making the decisions that you need to make because, I mean, they're already hard enough and if you don't have the right information, well, that, that's, that would be a failure on my part.
Thank you. Describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with the situation and what was the outcome?
Uh, I suppose, one of the biggest mistakes, uh, in my career was very early, but it was, it was very impactful. This was in Wisconsin and, uh, this was back in like 2010. There was Act 10 going on and the dissolution of a number of the public unions over there. And as, uh, an intern, I was actually tasked with helping develop the personnel manual, which had been neglected because basically everybody had been represented and most of the policies had been addressed, uh, in the contracts. And suddenly, you know, these contracts were no longer going to exist. And I was working very diligently preparing this thing and working it with the department heads and, uh, what I didn't realize was how uncomfortable the staff was because they didn't know what the heck was going on. And, and to me, that was a very big failure because there's no reason why I shouldn't have been, uh, making sure that they could see, uh, the drafts and what was going on. And what resulted from that was a, a short period of animosity and frustration on people's part and it could have been avoided, uh, but I, I didn't know any better. But that lesson, that lesson, uh, sticks with me, uh, ever since.
Thank you. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you.
Question four, how would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
I think that's gonna take a really, um, engaging effort. Uh, it might even require some outside help. But, I, if I was to undertake the process, I think there's a number of things that we would have to undertake. But I think it starts with identifying where our deficiencies are, where we haven't been serving, what are the concerns and needs of these communities? And of course, that means bridging the gap, right? So, we need to find out why these folks aren't comfortable telling us, uh, their concerns or why, why they, they can't, uh, feel comfortable, you know, sharing those things. And, and that might mean reaching out to some of these, uh, you know, diverse groups, leaders in them, religious leaders or, uh, community group leaders, helping to make the, those communications happen. I think the other element would be, uh, developing what, um, and this has actually been something I've been studying, uh, as a professional interest of mine, but I, they, in, in the industry of management, they call it cultural agility. The ability to, um, to, to recognize, uh, cultural difference and, uh, find, um, the value and appreciate the perspective through that, that different cultural lens, which, you know, let's face it, we all have, um, our preconceived notions about what something should be or how it is done. And I think to, to deal with and become more, um, prepared to integrate and bring in diversity means, uh, putting ourselves outside of our comfort zones, uh, challenging ourselves to, to listen and, and take in different perspectives that really challenges our understanding of the way things are done. And so, that, that to me is a, that's gonna be a very large undertaking, but I'll tell you right now, it's something I really want to do. And, um, when I saw that, uh, as an outcome in your comprehensive plan, that was very appealing to me because professionally, I think we have an ethical, uh, responsibility to serve all in our community and, you know, obviously, it's under And, you know, obviously, it's understandable that, you know, societal conditions prevent us from sometimes being receptive to those communities' needs. But, you know, our, our job is to try to find our way through that gap and I wanna be the person to help you do that.
Ken, welcome.
Thank you.
Describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations and then describe how building these types of relationships benefited the community or, or the organization that you were with.
I think, you know, in my career, some of the most beneficial things that I've been able to accomplish have been done with the help and collaboration of other agencies. I mean, when I was out in Pine City, we had just an excellent relationship with Pine County and having their support behind a lot of the things that we were working on made a really big difference. For example, one of the things that I was challenged with when I came into Pine City was addressing housing shortage and housing shortage for diverse populations because, you know, the community does have its fair share of, of lower-income individuals. So one of the things that we did very early on is we partnered with the county and the county helped us prepare a housing study for the entire county. And by the way, when, when this happened, this was not just Pine City, but Hinckley and Sandstone were the other two larger communities in the county. And that was just a very valuable effort so that we could all understand what the housing needs were and we did it collectively. It wasn't really a competition. And that, that made a big difference too because our freedom of sharing of information helped us make a lot of very good development connections. You know, I was able to facilitate what is now gonna be a, you know, a three-hundred-unit senior living facility right across from the courthouse over there. And it was just by making a contact with a colleague in Cambridge and finding out the name and contact of a developer. And that was because, you know, we collaborate and we share information. So, you know, to me, working with other agencies is absolutely essential and having a good collaborative relationship is important, whether we share a road, whether we share a jurisdiction, you know, that's all very fundamental. And a lot of the communities I've been in, we haven't had our own police department. I've, I've been in communities that have, but obviously, having a relationship with the sheriff's department and the sheriff and his command was kind of essential for us to be able to address a lot of the community policing needs and our own ordinance enforcement. So, yeah, I, I don't see us being very effective without having good relations with our, our neighbors and county and other agencies.
Thank you.
Question number six. In your current or previous roles, what is the most difficult decision you've had to make? And how did you come to that decision?
You know, sometimes just because our, the business requires us to tell somebody they can't do that and tell them no, that's sometimes pretty hard. But I suppose, one of the, probably the most difficult things I've ever done professionally was dealing with condemnation and working through the condemnation of property, particularly when there are people living there, right? You know, as a city, we, we, we don't wanna make somebody homeless, but at the same time, we don't want them to live in unsafe living conditions. And so, you know, those have probably been the hardest. And I once had condemnation where a tenant, the, the property was so, in such poor condition that the tenant actually went through the bathroom floor, like fell through a, a hole opened up. You know, so we had to help him find another place to, to live. Fortunately, we were able to do that, he was the only tenant in there, but that one was difficult. I think the, probably the hardest was in Pine City where we had a property that was already not well-managed by its owner and there were delinquent payments for like utilities, you know, so winter coming, no heat, those type of things. So, you know, we had to work very hard to try to find a way to make sure these folks had, you know, housing, but at the same time, addressing the safety concerns. I think those, those have been the hardest issues, you know. Arguing with the, the gas company to keep the gas on and they're like, well, you guys can collect your fee, but what about us, you know? So, you know, we had to figure out solutions and we had to be really creative because, I mean, the, the, the consequences of, of not doing it right, you know, could mean somebody's either not living safe or don't have a home altogether. So those were probably the most difficult professional things I had to deal with.
Number seven. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
I once had an inspector who had to inspect a property owned by a city council member and there were a number of pretty substantial violations. That council member came to me and asked me to stop what was happening and I told him that I couldn't and that I wouldn't and that I had to make sure that we followed our ordinance and addressed the issues. I told him what I would tell just about anybody else, you know, let's talk, let's work out solutions to getting this done. But it was, it was quite damaging to my relationship with that council member for a while. After some time, I was able to recoup a little bit of that relationship before he, he had left the council. But I was quick to tell my inspector I would have his back and that I was gonna make sure that, you know, we were able to proceed with dealing with those inspection violations. That was hard, but it was the right thing to do. You know, we don't offer special treatment to people just because of their position. We have to try to treat people fairly regardless of that. So that, that would be one example.
Number eight. What have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
Oh, boy. You know, I, looking back on it, there's a variety of different things that I could probably call back on. I think, you know, I came in to one community fairly recent that had a very negative work culture and a very culture of distrust and fear and a lot of grievances. And, you know, what I was pleased is that when I left that community, one, I had staff who asked me not to leave, but two, I mean, many of them told me that they were happy to come to work again. And so that to me meant a, a great deal. I think the other element, and I'm just gonna add on to this, is just, you know, to see all the development, you know, to remember that this just started with a conversation I had with this developer and now, look, all of these units and housing that wasn't there before and to see that building become a reality, that, I mean, that's a legacy that I think is, is also very impactful.
Thank you.
Question nine. North St. Paul has experienced some recent turnover with the city manager position. If hired, what do you feel needs to be addressed right away?
Well, I think the first thing that I need to do is build the confidence that you all will expect of me, but also the staff and the community. I wanna build very good and effective relationships with all of you. I want you, I want everybody to know that I am here to help and try to solve problems when I can or find where we can get an answer to a problem or how we can address it. So that's very important, is establishing those strong relationships and being as communicative as I can. You know, communication is just, I think, an essential thing that I prioritize quite a bit. I, I think the other elements will be to just make sure that I am not letting very critical projects get delayed. You know, delaying any capital project or development project can be extremely costly. And so I think the other thing is just making sure that we have the continuity, that things are continuing to move forward without pause or delay. And I think the, the other thing is, you know, just absorbing as much as possible so that I can be as effective of a generalist as possible. I will definitely be turning to your management team. They've been very, they, they impressed me a great deal and I think you have a very great staff. So I think on that front, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be an awfully difficult thing for me to transition into this position. But what will be important is that I identify the gaps that need to be filled, that I keep things going, that I make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Why should North St. Paul City Council select you as our next city manager?
Well, I think one of the things that I would just say is I think I, I have the requisite skills sets that you are looking for. I can lead, I'm not afraid to manage when management is needed. I'm good at development and creating relationships to facilitate development. I'm also good at helping navigate development and help guide developers through the process while making sure that our interests are not overlooked or underwritten. I'm good at being flexible, filling the needs and the gaps. My entire career has been about doing those sorts of things. So I think, from my perspective, it's that I can be a little bit molded. I'm not, I, I don't have sharp corners. And I come in with the open idea of understanding and then I also want to facilitate, you know, best practice, doing things exemplary. I, I want us to be recognized for, for the things that we do, not so that it's like patting ourselves on the back, but so that we know as a team of what we've accomplished. So I, I think I bring those elements and, you know, I, I do so with every investment. This is not just a career change, this is a, this is a relocation for me. I'm moving and I wanna be a part of this place, so that's what I would say.
Great, thank you.
We do have a lot, I think it's four fifty, isn't it? Any follow-up questions for Ken? That's a good sign.
Wow, okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
Of course, of course. So, you know, one of the things is I've been doing my research on your community is, you know, to have a major highway bisect, you know, north from south. I looked at the comprehensive plan and certainly there was elements of talking about how to, to support interconnectivity. But my question to you is, do you see this physical divide as somehow breaking the cohesion of our, of the community? Does it, does north feel different than south? Or is this just something that isn't an issue here?
Good question.
I think it used to be, we, we got a bridge finally, 'cause I was always the north side and then the south side where my parents were. So that was difficult, but it's helpful. We're going through the thirty-six and one-twenty deal and that, that'll be part of your, on your plate too. I don't know if it's gonna happen in my time or our time, but we're on the discussion on that, but...
Have you had any like real serious discussion with MinDOT about?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a lot of talk.
A lot of talk, yeah.
No money, but it's an ongoing, I mean, we're at the table.
Right, okay, well, it's good to be engaged.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've seen MinDOT do some things and, and no bad-mouthing the agency, they, they're, it's very good. But sometimes it can be disjointed. You talk to one person, you're, you hear something from somebody else. So it can be sometimes difficult working with them, but there are good people there and they're a good agency, but... I'd say another question that I have, you know, I think one of the things that we focus on a lot just because our job is to, to make things better, is that we focus on the negative. My curiosity is to you, what, what, if you were to brag about something, and I know it, it breaks with humility, but brag about something that North St. Paul has accomplished, what would that be? And, and why do you think that's, you know, worthy?
Okay, well, your first question for the physical divide, I, I've lived here my whole life and I've lived on both sides of the highway and it's, it's a non-issue. It, it was quite the change when the, the Highway Thirty-Six project went in and we had, you know, bridges at Margaret and McKnight now, but it's not really an issue for me anyway. Things to brag about North St. Paul, I think our uniqueness in that we have a downtown and that a lot of cities don't have that and are envious of that. But also, it's, it's gone through, you know, the changes with the Maplewood Mall and the exodus of businesses, just how that all changes and now we're seeing some redevelopment. And, and a lot of it is residential apartment-driven. And so there are concerns that, you know, housing is gonna overtake downtown, we're gonna lose that small-town feel and, and those drive these businesses out. So that's just something to be cognitive of.
Question related to where you're taking this. My curiosity is, have we, has there been an effort to undertake like downtown branding, trying to make a downtown more of a, some sort of destination where people, you know, find that this is the place to shop or have we not, or say we, but I'm not, not even part of this organization yet, but... Has there been efforts to try to draw people to downtown and, you know, how have those worked out?
So I would say the, you know, the marketing we have kind of done signage, you know, for the downtown, try to get people off the, I think that, I think we do lack that. I think it's a kind of a negative, maybe a thing that we do lack. We just talked about maybe putting a sign down on McKnight, you know, drawing people to, to the downtown. But I think having the restaurant, you know, we have a, a new restaurant in town, that's gonna draw people into downtown. So we're, we're heading for that, we're heading in the right direction and I think we need, we need more help with that. Councilmember Wang, I don't know if you wanna add to that or...
So for, for your first question in regards to the divide, from my perspective, if I am on bike or walking, it, there is a, a, a big difference in how I access the other side of the freeway. But by car, it's fine. I would say there's a difference in density and access to resources. So you have some of the larger, major parks on the north side and then, I mean, you have some pretty good smaller parks on the south side, but there are some differences there. And to your second question, can you repeat that again?
Well, the question is, is if you had something that, is there something about North St. Paul that you think is worthy of bragging about, I guess, would be the question.
Yeah, I would, I would reiterate that the downtown is something that has so much potential and we're already in that, you know, going, going through it. And I think that it's just gonna continue being our biggest asset and all the connections that, you know, like the Gateway Trail can, you know, really highlight our downtown.
The Gateway. Yes, I've done quite a bit of work on Gateway. Just yesterday, I was able to, and I'm sorry, I just have to mention this because I'm so excited. Yesterday, I was at the Capitol and we were able to secure two-point-six million to do a segment of Gateway in Scandia. So it's exciting to see that, that trail get built out, so. So, by the way, I have one other thing I'd like to mention. I am not afraid to go and look for money. And I'm not afraid to go to legislature and try to seek out opportunities and resources. I know enough that I'm not always capable of doing it on my own, but I have been successfully able to obtain federal funding and state funding, recent example, you know, for projects. And I hope that I can bring that talent to you guys as well. It's a lot of work and it is time investment. So it has to be very strategic. But I think, you know, when it, when planned out, it can be really quite valuable because it's a big return on investment, but.
About one minute left.
You want to add anything?
I guess from your, from question number one, no, I truly don't see from the interaction of the city standpoint, a lot of difference between the north side and the south side. You know, a lot of the things that councilmember Wong brought up are from accessibility, walkability and resources. From, one of the things that I, that I would brag about North St. Paul, two things is just one, community pride. I think everybody that you talk to that's resident of St. Paul is very proud of the fact that they're a resident of North St. Paul. And that stems from just that small town feel in the downtown.
Nice, I want to be a part of that. I like small towns. I like the convenience that North St. Paul offers. So I'm really hopeful that you do select me. And I am very sincere in my interest in, in being part of this wonderful community. And I hope you give me some really good thought. So thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you.
And inviting me out here.
Thank you.
Privilege.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to apply.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Did you break my pencil?
Okay. The lead was like.
I pulled a little broken piece of lead out.
It's been a while.
Went to school, went to college to be an engineer and that's all I've used for a long time.
Yeah. Only old school, I like a good old graphite.
If you drop these, you don't have to, yep.
I like the feeling of a graphite pencil. I think maybe because I grew up with it, like, is that very young of a person? But. We do like introduction.
That's a start. Yeah, it's. Now you're bringing up.
I just realized last time.
I mean, I have no idea, I haven't, we just, they were just approved and I don't know who they even have a part in the rec meeting since they were approved.
Actually have the supply.
Is that a question out of planning?
Half an hour goes fast.
I know it goes fast. Hiking, no camping, no excursion, just water?
Yeah, just out to the beach or something. Maybe on the canoe or something. What about you? You have a blue town?
Yeah, we'll take that Saturday for.
Saturday? So you don't. You've been on a lot of musts in your career, right?
Right.
Walking around. In Minnesota?
Yeah, it's just, it's about half of Little Falls.
Oh, where?
Of Little Falls.
Oh, okay. Breaking the mountain? Yeah, you need a sawzall. Just like, just sawzall.
Yep.
You have like, like, or have you, um, you can call it sister being?
When you start, you can help up just a chunk of hardwood. So. A lot of summer.
That's hard. Few of those loud videos.
Exactly. Ghost. Ghost in the chambers coming in. Every room a chair speed.
Who we are probably.
I know today that the acre view apartments is 33% rented.
I know. Thirty-three?
Thirty-three percent rented.
When did they, I can't, are they?
I think it just went on, it just went on line.
Because I keep waiting for all the cars in the parking lot.
Right.
I haven't seen them.
They're in the garage.
It could very well be.
It's all rocks and tears.
Feel like cheers when Norm had the squeaky shoes. Or Cliff, Cliff had the squeaky shoes.
Give him about five minutes in the race?
Sure. Five, 10, so it'll be 5:40. All right?
Yeah, you're getting good on time.
Where's the fair?
No, thinking about one, I don't know. I haven't gone for three years on COVID, so.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor's Council, this is the fourth candidate of five. This will be Ms. Nicole Miller, and she'll be obviously interviewing for the city manager position. There's thirty minutes and she has ten questions, so I've been incumbent upon her to make sure that she gets through them all. If there is time at the end, then if Ms. Miller wishes to ask any questions, she sure can, of you of the city council, if time permits.
Thank you. Welcome, Nicole. You can just relax and we're gonna start the interview by this side of the room. And then we're gonna work this way and work back, so just relax. And if you need to take a drink, go ahead and take a drink, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Thorson.
Hello, Nicole. The first question here is, please tell us what interests you about this position? And highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for this job.
Thank you to the city council for having me here. This is, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to interview for the city manager position here. Just wanna start out by telling you a little bit about myself. I come from a community that's a cohesive and high-functioning team. We have a positive culture. And so, what I would bring to your community here is high level of trust and follow-through. How I do that is through collaborative communications with the council and staff, where both council and staff feel that they can come to me as an information hub. Currently, staff come to me.
Put your, hold on one second, Nicole, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Hopefully it works now. Here we go. Let's see how close I can get it, right?
Be like a rock star.
Cause we're good.
We're good.
So currently, staff come to me with potential problems, and together as a team, we create solutions. Example of that is every year, each department does an annual report. They used to be about twenty pages long. And together as a team, we condensed that down into eight-panel brochure for each department, which we believe would be easier for the community to digest versus twenty to thirty-page paper. And one thing I'm really good at is strategic planning. I've had the opportunity to be part of an annual goal-setting strategic planning retreat that is a well-run machine. And so, my direct involvement in that right now is I work with the facilitator to create the agenda and to come up with discussion topics. I also work with the department heads to review our prior-year accomplishments, as well as what's coming up on the radar for them. Some of the discussion topics we've had revolve around affordable housing. We had discussion about communications. Recently, the residential, single-family zoning. And all of this helps us to create our goals for the rest of that year. North St. Paul has real meaning to me. I'm a North High grad. I've participated in the community events over, over many years. The car show, Fall Roundup Parade, was sharing with your staff. I remember the tour day North St. Paul 5K pancake breakfast. Mostly enjoyed the pancakes after the walk-run. I had the opportunity to be part of your fire department, where I saw the community pull together and serve the rest of their community with professionalism and pride. And so, this is a community I'd be honored to work for. Yeah.
Welcome, Nicole. Question number two, describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff.
Yes. It would be building relationships. So I would focus on finding out what the priorities are of the council, and then also how they wanna be communicated with. And also, building those relationships with staff to see how I can help them to be successful, as well as getting information from staff, hoping, well, as I'm building that relationship, where they are coming to me to keep me informed, so then I can come to you to keep you informed.
Number three, describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with this situation and what was the outcome?
Probably the most recent mistake I made, I've made many. We're not perfect, and I own them. So, part of a code review committee with other staff. And my role is to update our city code after our code changes have been implemented. One of our meetings, I saw on the agenda what that one of the items was, city code updates missed, or something to that effect. And so, instantly, I said, hey, that's me, that's me. What did I, what did I miss? And so, the group explained that there were some recent updates that weren't in the code. And so, I said, let them all know that they can just come to me at any time, say, hey, Nicole, you missed this. So, what I've learned to do after that is, after I make changes, then I would close the document and then reopen it to make sure it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, Nicole. And question four, how would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
Sure. Let's see, think of this situation for a second. Currently, I'm involved in many collaborations with outside organizations. And I nurture those relationships to make sure they're solid, so that we can support each other. Some of the projects that I've worked on involve, right now, is with our Kiwanis organization. We had initiative to welcome new residents that we partnered with Kiwanis to do. I'm currently working with them to branch out to our multifamily new residents. And what the welcoming packet includes is information on how to navigate the community, as well as resources for them. Probably take the same approach as I have when I led our Complete Count Committee for the census, is really taking the approach of people trust and will listen to people that they're familiar with. So, building those relationships first, and then hopefully, those organizations, if it's faith groups or the school, whatever can disseminate that information to their members. And because they have that trusting relationship, it will maybe be more effective. But I'm always, every interaction I have with resident or contractor is really just to be respectful and to listen to them. And I think that's most important, is that people wanna be listened to. And at the end of the day, the best thing that can come from it is that created kind of ambassador for the city. That's great, cause then they can go tell people that they know what they learned from the city as well.
Thank you.
Nicole, welcome. Describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations. Then describe how building these types of relationships benefited the community or organization you worked for.
Sure. Kinda to piggyback off, off the last question as well. So some of the outside collaborations that I lead or I'm the point person for are with the counties for elections and environmental health. And recently, I was able to secure some technical assistance from Ramsey County to help us along with Project I'm Leading, going from our organized collection for waste haulers, going down from three to a single waste hauler. So I was able to do that. The, all these different relationships that we have really just give us additional tools in our toolbox to help our residents out as well.
Thank you.
We're on question number six. In your current or previous role, what has been the most difficult decision you've had to make? And how did you come to that decision?
In my current role, our community experienced a police officer-involved shooting, which left the community hurting. What I did to help support our team is to create a positive space where staff and my supervisor could come and express how they were feeling. And just, just to be an open-door policy, I also noticed during that time that our front office staff were feeling left out of some communications. So, because there is not a playbook that we could go by to, to deal with this tragedy that happened. So I went out there and I could try and give them information as I, as I could, and also to listen to how they were feeling. Sometime later, my supervisor told me what an important leadership role that I provided in keeping the team cohesive during this difficult time. So it didn't, it really, wasn't really a decision I knew I was making at the time, but I just showed up and you just, you just are there for your community, and we were pulled together and did the best I could.
Number seven, describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
Probably piggyback of our, of the last situation. I would say that I'm always very transparent and honest with everyone, even when their perceptions might differ from me. And so, I wasn't alone in this, but a lot of staff, you know, we were dealing with a hurting community. So, we had to field a lot of calls from people that were angry. And even if I didn't agree with what they were saying, I understood how important it was to just listen.
Number eight, what have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
Currently, in my role, I oversee several areas of communications, and it's a heavy workload. So, our council is supportive and allowed us to hire a communications coordinator, which then could focus on the day-to-day communications, while I focus on more strategic planning for communications. As a result of that, I was able to complete a comprehensive communications plan for our community, two website redesigns that went through, increased social media presence for our administration department. I also lead monthly meetings with, regarding communications for all of our departments. And say most importantly, is a project I'm working on right now, which is a community engagement project that came out of our strategic planning session this year. And it's a, I'm leading a livability survey for the community, which is focusing on ten key facets of livability in the communities. Some areas are public safety, health, wellness, parks, those type of things. Those results will be available later this year, and then we will use that at our next goal setting to figure out how we can best utilize those results. And so, I feel very proud of that. But what I think that I would, what I would want to be remembered by, or like what I think I made the biggest impact in, in the community I'm at right now, is just being a positive and contributing member of the team. And so, it's not just projects I've completed, but how I've been a part of their team.
All right, thank you. I have question nine. So, North St. Paul has experienced some recent turnover with the city manager position. If hired, what do you feel needs to be addressed, addressed right away?
Yes, I'm aware, I'm aware of that. And what I share with your staff as well, is the reason I'm here is because of the staff, is because of all the good things I've heard about them, as well as yourselves. But I mostly hear about the staff. And so, I just wanna make sure that we can, I can help them addressing any staffing issues they have, but also taking a look at any holes that we have with staffing. I also have experience with having the opportunity when different positions have opened up in our community to reevaluate and to look at what the current needs are of, of the city with staff's input, because they know what they're doing as well. So, that would definitely be a priority of mine.
Thank you.
Why should North St. Paul City Council select you as our next city manager?
Hopefully, I've demonstrated that the city is near and dear to me. It does mean something to me. On top of that, I'm a strong project leader. I've been told by my team members that they come to me when, if they know, they know I will see a project through to completion. I'm detail-orienteded, and I am a great collaborator. How I lead the projects that I'm currently working on is I hear the goals and objectives from the stakeholders, such as yourselves, and meet with our subject matter experts, which are our staff, to come up with potential projects that will meet your, meet your goals. I communicate very openly about timelines and any potential issues we have. And collaboration is key, along with communications. To me, if I see that communications are going awry, I immediately call our team together and have a conversation so we can get back on track. An example of a, a current project that I'm currently leading that's almost completed is, again, the single hauler RFP.
Thank you.
Do we have any follow-up questions for Nicole? Anybody?
I have none.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do, I do, thank you for.
That's, that's the hard part for us.
I'm sure you've been asked this. What are the few major priorities of the city manager that you would expect right away?
Ms. Mayor Peters?
What are our priorities right now? Well, just to keep the momentum going with the redevelopment. I don't wanna stall that out. Keeping our community engaged and, you know, listening to them, and not forgetting other voices. And then that Highway thirty-six and one-twenty is a big issue, keeping informed on that and at the table. Cause that'll affect us down the road, thanks.
One thing that I have done too is to attend community events and to be the face of the city during non-business hours. So I think it's really important for community engagement as well.
Okay. We'll just go right down the, we'll answer the question and.
I think stability in the management position here. I mean, that, having that turnover and that turmoil, it, it creates a trickle-down effect. And so, you know, hopefully, our goal is we find someone who's, who's here for long-term and can provide leadership, and that this isn't just like a building block for their career. And then just to focus on the, our capital improvement plan and our infrastructure that's aging and, and needs to be addressed.
And I agree with, with what's been said, and, you know, I, I believe, building the relationship between the community relationship. Like you say, you know, you're the face of the city, so you're out in the community. I, I think that's, you know, very positive. Being the face of the, internal of the organization, you know, building those relationships. I think that's, that's really important.
Yeah, again, I would echo everything here. And, yeah, I think relationships, particularly internal, I think will be. I think will be super vital at this point for the city manager. And then subsequently, other relationships, whether that be with our new legislators or new community members coming in, that they're involved and that, you know, their voices are at the table and reflect the changes that are happening here in North St. Paul.
Stability in the role is key for me. One of the other ones that I haven't heard is just finding alternative ways to generate funding. You know, whether that be grants, whether that be other, you know, other things that we haven't been able to take advantage of as a city.
Sure, that could potentially be a goal-setting topic that you may want to delve deeper into with maybe a subject matter expert from some area that could help figure that out. What I did share with your staff is the same thing that you guys are addressing right now or bringing up is stability. I am here because of the staff and the positive feedback that I've received about them. And so if chosen for the city manager position, I'm going to come here. And it's not a stepping stone. It's a very similar type of organization where I currently come from, so I feel very comfortable stepping into that role. But I don't have any plans to go anywhere else. I mean, it means something to me to be here.
Anything else for...
If I do have time. What are the biggest challenges that the city manager will face? It probably maybe is some of the same things that we've already discussed. But maybe, can I just ask? How do you see the city manager being involved in the onboarding process for the new council members?
Turn it over to Councilmember Thorson.
So the biggest challenges that the manager may face will be, I think, dealing with staffing issues. That's always a challenge. And how you deal with those challenges as they come up. And then just capital improvement plan and redevelopment on some of these projects that can get very complicated. And then how you interact with staff and our contractors. But the onboarding for new council members, you know, I'm trying to think back when I first got elected. I got a phone call from one council member who I was replacing, and met with him, got a phone call from the mayor, met with him. And then, other than that, the city manager had a phone call at some point after some meetings and just kind of, you know, gave me some tips and resources and the commission I was appointed. So it's kind of up to the manager and how they see fit. But I would envision you being in a very active role and reaching out and being proactive, rather than having people kind of, you know, wondering, well, what do I do? How do I get into the building? How does my email get set up? Those sorts of things. It just, you know, be upfront and communicate immediately with those people so they feel comfortable coming in here and they're not like an outsider.
You know, I skipped you, so I wanted to go to Councilmember Peterson.
I was changing it up.
No, made a mistake.
No, I piggyback on Councilmember Thorson. You know, you're looking at probably some new people here. And then you've got those guys there, and they're not, they're new, but they're old. I mean, so it could be, you know, a big changeover. So I like the idea of being more welcoming. And they don't, there's not really a handbook for this job either. You learn as you go. And so I figure you'd be willing to do that.
Yes, I actually have some great resources for onboarding.
Yeah.
I would be able to utilize in this role as well.
Right.
Also, it's important, again, we talked about relationships, but also I think it's important for the council members to develop that relationship and to see each other as real people and humans. So hopefully, help facilitate that as well.
Like a retreat or something, yeah.
And I would agree that, you know, that's important, that, you know, the freshmen coming in. It's like, it's just like high school, you know? It's freshmen coming in and they don't know a whole lot. And they look up to the seniors, not necessarily age seniors, but the seniors in the high school and, you know, and the mentors. The mentors could be the department heads, you know? So you all got to work together and to build that relationship.
Yeah, I would agree with a lot of that. And as a newer council member, I think one thing that I found particularly useful was the League of Minnesota Cities course that they have for new elected. I found that valuable, especially when it's coming up to budget time and things like that. So for the practical...
Again, being last, being last. From challenges, I've really got two. Staffing is one, and making sure that you keep everybody's staff balanced. And, you know, they're definitely all, their plates are full. And the other one is, from your specific role, keeping all the plates spinning. There's a lot of plates on stick spinning right now, and we can't have anything wobble. And some of those might keep you up at night. So there's, those would be a couple of the big challenges that I see. But from an onboarding standpoint, communication from your role, communication, collaboration with what sits up here on council. There are additional resources available. Lisa addressed, League of Minnesota Cities, I think, had a phenomenal one. Legal provided some great staff, some definite direction as what some of the rules are that we may or may not have thought of, just as well as other department heads within, to help better understand what's going on.
Are you referring to the open meeting law by chance?
I'd never refer to an open meeting law with more than three people.
I am pretty familiar with that myself. And I am comfortable and currently manage a lot of different projects all at once. So I like to be involved. And, but I also know when my plate gets too full, to see the opportunities to delegate different duties to staff so they can take ownership of it as well. But I would look forward to being part of the onboarding process. I know that coming in, you know, that there could be some turnover. But I think it's exciting, too.
Well, thank you, unless you have something else for us.
That was all my questions.
Good, thank you. And thank you for taking the time to apply for the position. And, you know, we look forward to trying to make a decision in a little bit here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When did our microphones get numbered?
Oh, that's new.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, that was my mistake. That wasn't her, she had the mic.
Okay.
I get it. I get it. Sometimes Carrie will just like crank my mic up. And it scares me to hear my own voice that loud. Mm-hmm. 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 One more?
One more.
We had a schedule, this is awesome.
What? No, you gotta stick around. You gotta stick around. Sure!
Enjoy the rest of your day. Yeah, you should go see it.
Are we going to get the sheets from the...
Yeah.
Oh, that's what she's doing.
Making the copy, yeah. Do you remember what we were doing?
I know.
She frees up, I was expecting her to get all... I was sitting over there, but it was kind of like a flashback.
I remember that.
Hasn't this happened before?
He only filled in that one a couple times.
Oh, Jam?
Jam. What's the name again?
Joel Jamming.
Jamming.
We saw you wandering.
Just looking. Yeah, I had to go outside. There's a recycling on the parking lot door.
In the kitchen?
Oh, I didn't check there. Yeah, I think in the hallway.
They never, they always just dumped it all in the garbage and all the parts and stuff. Some of the bins even had shared the same container. So it's just, but it goes to the facility. And they just pull the stuff out, but yeah.
You could probably work with the county when they did that presentation. Like, well, they're looking at organics, but I'm sure, I definitely know that they have...
Well, at the park, when I had my class reunion, they had the recycling and all the cans went in there. It was very noticeable.
Organized, yeah.
Yeah, we need one of those here now. But what I'm telling you is, in practice, in reality, they're different. So when the park, you know, you're at the park and everyone puts their cans, your recycle can, on Monday, when the crews come and pick it up, they just pick it up.
Yeah.
They haul it to the, and they dump it in there. There's a metal bin, but most of the time it all just gets dumped in the same dumpster, all down there. And then they do sort it, they'll pull out metals and aluminum and stuff. But they prefer that, you know, that's why they're trying to do that. They have separate trucks that haul it places and stuff.
It's funny to see Brian in a suit.
I know, he looks nice.
Can you wear a suit all the time?
No, just the pork coat. So are we zooming back at six?
See you. I would assume, yeah.
No. Why are we starting at six? Brian's already done his panel interview.
Is he done?
Yeah.
He did it at 1:30.
Lights are off in the room.
Yeah, he did his at 1:30 with the staff.
He probably doesn't know he can come up earlier.
We can let Mark know. Maybe that's what Andy's doing.
You keep looking at your phone, looking at the clock, so I figured something's going on.
Oh, no, no.
I know. It was more than a fair.
John, do you order the fare?
Absolutely not. Crowds. Lot of people.
You took the bus from Target?
Here, this turn here?
No. Those are about Target. It's about a half an hour drive. So you go on to 36, 280, Como. You go on to thirty-six, two eighty, Como.
Pick up the other one.
No.
Just to get there?
You go in the back lane, go on the north end.
There's a parking right at Gestapo. On sixty-one, right across from the golf course, I think.
Right, good for them.
Yeah. Fleet Farm? I was going to the Transit Center, Maplewood Mall, but...
They charge for that spot, that location now.
They did, they did.
They didn't?
They did, yeah.
Oh, they did, it's like five bucks each way or something?
Six, six dollars or something, two or six dollars, something like that.
In a place?
The Transit Center at Maplewood. In the past, they don't have it this year.
Right of passage, my kids will get the fair for a few summers and that was prior to being of age to drive.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I learned real quick that the Transit's charged, but you go down to the spot on sixty-one, the church down there, and that...
Councilmember Thorson.
All right, first question, please tell us what interests you about this position and highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for this job.
Well, I feel I'm pretty heavily invested into this city. I've worked for the city of North St. Paul for twenty-three years. You know, I started off as a lineman, got into management after being here about a year. And then advanced into the director of management position. This is just a wonderful place to work on so many levels. We have a wonderful downtown, we're a unique city that we have our own downtown. We have great people that work here. I, I couldn't promote that enough, actually. But we have it on every level. We have it on the employees that are out there on the front lines doing the work. We have directors that do their job well. And that shows in the work and the output that they have. But we also are fortunate to have a city council that backs these employees. You know, last year, I came to you guys, middle of the year, wasn't even the budget time. We had a situation with the PD and, you know, trying to get a full staff for them and asked you guys for an employee, an officer, and a CSO, and you turned around and gave us two CSOs and an officer. So, that kind of backing is invaluable. It's just so important, it goes a long ways, it helps the morale of the city. And I hope I can bring that stability to the employees as well, which I think I can. So, not only have I been fortunate enough to do some city manager work, I got to do city manager work here for the city of North St. Paul. So, it's been about nine months now. It's been a great experience. Like I said, the employees, everybody's always asked, you know, if there's anything you need, if there's anything I can help with. We just, we have so many good things going on. We've seen development here that we haven't seen in probably fifty years. It keeps moving forward in a positive manner. I'd love to keep steering that down that path. I think it's just a great place to work and I would love to be in that position until I retired.
Question number two, Brian, describe how you would build the trust with the city council and staff.
Well, I think one of the hardest things that a city manager has to do if they're moving around is to build that relationship, you know, with, with council, first and foremost, but also the employees. And knowing their employees, knowing how they operate, what they need, the guidance they need as a manager. But, you know, some of this just, it just takes more time. Of course, we are familiar with each other, but we've been able to work closer here for the nine months that I was doing the interim position. You know, we know the, the wants and the needs and I, I don't think that that's too difficult when you're doing the job, you're being transparent, you're being forward with the information. You know, following out the requests that you guys have for whatever operations that we're having. So I just think that builds over time, but I think we are fortunate to have a leg up on that with the history I have with the city.
Describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with the situation and what was the outcome?
Oh, gosh. You know, early on, when I went from being a lineman into management, it was probably my first taste at being a management. And I thought, well, you're a manager, all you have to do is tell the people what to do and they're just gonna do it. I couldn't disagree with that more at this point. You know, you have to put out the, the positive attitude, the knowledge that you're backing the employees, having a positive attitude with the employees. So, you know, and asking or telling somebody to do this job, you know, that person thankfully, they spoke up, said, you know, I mean, that was pretty rude, or whatever the situation was. And it really humbled me and I was really glad it happened and it was an early on mistake. I believe I really learned from that, but I learn from that every day, actually, with the different employees that we have, the personalities that we have. It, it's just an ongoing learning process dealing with our employees, but we're pretty fortunate with ones that we do have.
Thank you, welcome, Brian. I have question four. How would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
Truthfully, I would continue on with what we're doing. So, you know, Phil, since he's been here, they've started a community policing program to where they actually have those areas of the city that they know that those police officers are working in. They have that frontline communication, asking for the needs and concerns of the residents. You know, just that open communication that we have with our public, whether or not, when we go out and we ask for what were the different needs and wants of the community center. You know, an open, public forum, we got to listen to what people thought and, you know, having their kids have someplace to go after school and before the time the parents get off of work. You know, whether or not it's a, a boys' club or, you know, part of the, working with the school district to where we could do some kind of joint planning. Another thing that we have that is really nice is that called Civic Ready. So we have the software that translates the languages into the languages, the different languages that we have out there in our community. You know, we just did it today, notifying people that their garbage day might change with the holiday coming up. You know, it's been used with Phil and his community policing program. So, take advantage of what we already have and just build and learn on that from there. But open ourselves up to what the needs are. And I think we have a special, I don't know, a chance to do that with our student-built housing program as well, you know. More affordable housing that we might have an option for the, for those people. But there's all sorts of ways that we can do it and take advantage of what we already have.
Thank you.
Brian, welcome.
Thank you.
Describe your experience of working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations. Then describe how building these types of relationships benefit the community organization you work for.
Sure. This is a very common thing that we do. So, most recently with our, you know, we're talking about the Howie One Twenty, you know, redevelopment. So I know they've started that project south of ninety-four. They've gotten a good jump on that. There's nine communities that they're working with, north of ninety-four, all the way to six ninety-four. We were working with different counties, we were working with the state. I think there's a lot of collaborative efforts that we can do. You know, and the last time I was interim, I saw the benefits of having those contacts and relationships with, whether or not it's state representatives or state senators, grant programs that might be available for housing or business improvements. I think there's a lot to be gained by having those relationships. You know, even with our conservation improvement program that we have in our electric department to where, you know, we spend money on ways to have energy savings, have sustainable energy. You know, I partnered with the school district and we gave out many thousands of ECO kits that we gave to the kids that they were able to bring home to their parents, but, you know, we also made it interesting for the younger kids. It was an elementary school, so whether or not it was a coloring book or, you know, something to get that point across as well. So, there are a lot of agencies that we can benefit from and that can benefit from us. And I think we do that on a regular basis. I think that really does help and build our community. It keeps us plugged in to the wants and needs of people. That's how we get that feedback. I think relationships are just an incredibly critical part of this job and to keep going with that and build on what I already have for relationships, not only in the city, but with the community.
All right, question number six. In your current or previous roles, what is the most difficult decision you've had to make and how did you come to that decision?
It's one I think about all the time, actually. At, of course, when you're dealing with HR issues, not to get in any kind of depth or detail, but you know, this, this person was not just a colleague, they were a dear friend. And it got to a point where the functions of the job could not be accomplished. You know, you feel like you do what you can with those friendships, you know, you cover for them, you try to make up that difference, you know, but you step back a minute and you look at the bigger picture and what message does that send to the other employees that are here? That if you can't perform the duties of your job and you're still around, I mean, incredibly gut-wrenching situation. It was extremely difficult. But we did have conversations, understood where we were coming from and what the city's needs were and how they weren't getting met. And the person did end up moving on. Just a very difficult, HR situations can be, very heartstrings, can be pulled on those, it's, it can be tough.
Number seven. Describe a situation that you feel that demonstrates your integrity and ethical standing.
In a way, I could bring up that same situation. You know, is, is it ethical to allow somebody to keep working that can't do their functions of the job, but, you know, they're friends of the people that you're working with? You know, that, that's pretty difficult. But, you know, being ethical, I think is, that's almost a daily thing that you deal with. I mean, you, you're expected to do what other people do as well. It's not do as I say, not as I do. You have to live that and you have to walk that line and you have to be able to show people that you're one of the group. You have to follow the same rules everybody else has to follow. So, I think that's a pretty good ethical path that really helps morale and helps relationships in the city. It really helps for a positive attitude with, with all the employees.
What have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
I don't know, I've, I've never been afraid to step up and, you know, take on the additional tasks of what is needed. I've actually would say that that is one of the things I really love about this job. We're a small community, so we get to wear many hats. The variety, to me, is wonderful, I, I really enjoy that. You're working for a bigger utility, you're only doing one thing, you're only doing overhead work or underground work. And we really get to branch out and that's no different than this position as well. So, could you repeat the question one more time?
What have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
So, even the last time, I think that example I brought up earlier of, you know, coming to you guys and seeing a need that we had, I think the, the PD was in a tough spot. I mean, they, come June, they had already used up all of their overtime. People were getting burned out. That's not, not a healthy situation for anybody to be burned out in. You know, saw the need, came to you and, and you guys helped out with it. That was no different than even in Public Works to where, you know, we saw the need after we had done some rearranging and management previously. And I think we kind of found out that, like, the Public Works, they, they really did need that superintendent back in that position. And I know that meant the world to Ron, it allowed him to do his job at a better level. It helps create with succession planning as well. So, listening to the, the needs of the employees, open communication and, you know, we do what we can to give the employees the tools and the training and education that they need to do their job to the best that they can.
Thank you.
All right, I have question nine. North St. Paul has experienced recent turnover with the city manager position. If hired, what do you feel needs to be addressed right away?
Stability. I don't even have to think about that. The, I tell you that, that drove me to want to do this. You know, especially for employees that have been here for eight years or so. That turnover is difficult and I've seen what it does to morale. You know, it, it, it keeps a damper on, I think, what your potential can be. When you don't have that stability in your job, you don't know, you know, what's gonna happen next. I can bring that. And for the sake that I've had the feedback from the employees that have asked me to do it. I remember we were in a staff meeting and collectively, they brought it up, I didn't. I didn't about this position. And they said, what do you think about that? And I said, well, you know, if I was to think about it, this is actually where I would start that conversation, is in that meeting with the directors to know that I have their backing and that they feel that I could do a good job for them as well as they could do a good job for the city.
Thank you.
Why should North St. Paul City Council select you as their next city manager?
Well, it's not to say that people can't learn the, you know, the intrinsic relationships that we have, but that foundation has already been set. I have a long-running relationship with the employees. I know what is important to you guys, the communication, the transparency, the, you know, following out your directives, you know, having a well-run budget, you know, for, for the city, to making sure we're not going over budget. There's many aspects to this job that I've already done. And I think I have a pretty good feel for what your guys' needs are. But I also love learning new things. That's another thing that drove me to this position. There's always something new to learn. And I look forward to the challenges and I would love to be the city manager to do that for you.
Any follow-up for Brian?
I have nothing.
Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I guess, you know, when I have questions, I usually come to you pretty fast to find out what the answer is, to try to stay on top of things. But I'm sure it's a common question, but like you said, we've had, you know, turnover in our city management. What are you looking for, for key characteristics for that position to be held in a healthy manner? That is good for all parties involved?
Ms. Peterson?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was, what was your question, Brad?
I was just curious. So with the turnover we've had with city managers, what do you feel in seeing that changeover is an important, you know, characteristic or function of the job that you guys would like to see? Whether or not it's different than what it was done before or better? Or do you think anything was missing before that is critical for you guys to do your job?
Yeah, there was some things missing. I think, I thought you brought a lot of stability back, you know? I know people like you here. And that's important to me because I'm not your, well, I'm your boss, but I'm not. I don't work under you or, well, I'm not here every day. So just, you know, be the leader you are. And, you know, people like your leadership style, I think, because you're pretty low-key. I've never seen you get upset. Maybe that'll change, you know, we get hired. But I just, I, I, you've been growing in this position. And I, I, I've seen the positivity and I like it. Thanks.
Yeah, I think you touched on it and we've mentioned this in a similar question and it's the stability. Having this revolving door in this position, it has a definite trickle-down effect. And it also, you know, we're in a fishbowl here, how we operate, or we should be. We're very transparent and people know what goes on and word travels fast. So it can also have negative impacts on the type of people you bring in, you know? Maybe people don't want to apply for a job here because they, they've heard things and seen things. So bringing stability to the position is probably key for me.
I agree with both of them. To me, it's also understanding the community. You have to understand the community to understand the needs and the wants and everything. And internally, you know, the, the people that work under you, you have to understand them. So again, it goes back to relationships and knowing what makes North St. Paul North St. Paul. Because we have a long history and understanding that, I think, is, is very beneficial.
I would expand on that or agree, and agree with that. In terms of relationships, obviously internal is super important in this role as well as external from residents to our other elected officials, to businesses, et cetera. So having those relationships, I think, is really critical in moving and leveraging our resources to do the things that we want here. I would think, I would add one thing that would be helpful that I, from our experience prior, was probably some hard conversations and accountability. Thank you.
For me, it's just stability within the role, internal trust and accessibility from council. And I wholeheartedly piggyback on, on Councilmember Wong's last comment.
We have such a great community here. I just feel really fortunate to be part of it. I've always enjoyed coming to work. The people that we have here are second to none. And they, every time there's an issue, people step up. If they don't know the answers, they know where to find it and they get it done. We're lucky, you're lucky to have such a great crew that we have here. And employees that we have here and how much they actually care about what happens day-to-day here. And to see that, it was really nice and interesting. I mean, I had an idea of what everybody's job was, but I think I got to see it more firsthand, coming up as an interim and, and seeing the inside workings of that and how people are willing to step up and do what it takes to get that job done. And, you know, working for the public, you know, if it's a small need or a large need. I mean, they were there, they do the follow-up. I just can't say enough about the people that are here, which makes this job a lot easier.
Anything else, any other questions for us?
Just thank you for having trusted me and to do the interim position. And I appreciate, you know, interviewing today. So thank you.
Good. Thank you, Brian, and wish you luck and thank you for applying for the position.
Thank you.
We're done. Now what?
That includes the, the interviews. And now next would be for your individual deliberation. We have feedback forums that are supplied by the staff during the staff panel. And I'll be handing those out shortly. And then reconvening at seven o'clock for the deliber, you know, for your action, hopefully appointing the next city manager.
Do we need to reconvene at seven or can it be 6:45? Give us a half an hour?
We could probably ask the audiovisual person to put that on the, the, the screen on, on TV to say that we convene at 6:45. Is that acceptable to the council? And Mr. AV person could do that too? I'd appreciate it.
Thumbs up from the, yeah.
Thumbs up, all right. Sounds good. 6:45, then Mary could reconvene the meeting.
And we'll get those, do you have them yet or? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
You look good in the suit.
Okay, I think we're set. So we've all had time to go through and decide we'll pick one, we'll pick one person. Do you want to, you want to do the introduction maybe and?
Sure. Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Now we get to the deliberation point after the candidates had an opportunity to do a tour of the city with the tour guide. They had a panel interview with staff panel and of course a formal interview with you as a council. And after you had an opportunity to... And after you had an opportunity to see some reflection from the staff feedback forums from the staff panel during your half-hour deliberation period, now would be the time to actually hopefully make a motion moving forward with the city manager that you'd like to see. I would recommend maybe each council member could state who they would like, and then if you wish, I offer any, any comments or whatever that may be that you feel would be of value to your fellow council members. And then maybe we'll hopefully be able to find some consensus. And then I guess that would be sent into a formal motion that we would have in your agenda. That was on there. And then this would, an employment agreement would need to be then ratified at a future city council meeting to make it all official.
So why don't I go ahead and start the way I did the initial questions, comments to the candidates. So I'll start with Councilmember Peterson.
Okay, my choice for number one is Brian Frandl.
Councilmember, you want to?
No, I just, we've had, were there some good candidates? I just think he's the guy that we need at this time.
Councilmember Thorson?
My number one candidate is Nicole Miller. And, you know, I think, looking at our, all the candidates, they're all qualified, I think we'd be well-served with any of them. But to me, she stood out as someone who's got the education and the well-rounded background. She's lived in this community, she graduated high school here, she was former member of the fire department. I think she knows the community and that she can bring that stability and the professionalism and that, that background that's needed because we've seen in prior, you know, people in this position who have not had the education experience and the struggles they've had. And then also, in the last city manager we hired, it was kind of a just singular experience in one area that didn't necessarily translate to this wide scope of this position. And I, you know, I, I respect Brian and, and the work he's done in filling in as interim, but that is, it's a distinctly different role, being in interim versus having the job. And my fear is that, you know, his background is so, so focused on the electric department that we're going to have a similar situation like what we had with John Stark, that he's going to get into this role and really feel the pressure and be overwhelmed, and then we're going to be back, well, the council will be back at a position, and then we'll be out, an electric superintendent. I think he's doing such a great job in that department, I'd hate to lose him there. But, you know, I think Nicole, she, like I said, her work experience working at city of, what is it? Yeah, St. Anthony Village. She's done great work over there. Colleagues and people have nothing but great things to say. And I think that we would be very well-served to hire her as our next city manager, and I think she will bring that long-term stability to the position.
Councilmember, actually, it's me. We're going in the same order.
You, do you want to go last?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll do the same order. My candidate would also be Brian Frandl. I think it, I think he's proven that he can do the job as being interim and is still pretty much being the same as a, as a city manager. He does have the ability to learn. He knows the, he knows our culture here. He's been here for, you know, many years, understands the, the community and understands the departments, department heads and how, and how things work within the, within the system. All good candidates, you know. I, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard decision, but I, I, you know, Nicole is also a very good candidate. The other ones were also too. But I think at this time, you know, the first thing that came out of, out of our mouths when the question was asked, you know, what's the most important thing from the city manager? And that's stability. And it's been proven that Brian has offered that stability part of, I know it's only, you know, it's only part of what, you know, what is expected of him, but I believe that's a big part that we need as a city right now, is that stability within, within the community. So that's, that's my choice. I'll go to Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to say that all of the candidates had so many different attributes and assets that it made it kind of a difficult decision in a lot of regards. They all brought so many different talents. For me, I, I have selected Nicole Miller as the, for my vote for city manager. And also, I want to say that Brian Frandl has done an amazing job that is no slight to him. He has been incredible. I also believe that Nicole brings an urban perspective, which is unique amongst the candidates to a certain degree, and, and also the education piece. So I would agree that there is a little bit more of a well-rounded candidate, so, thank you.
Sucks to go last now. First off, Mark, I want to thank you for doing this yet again for the city of North St. Paul, it's greatly appreciated. Sincerely appreciate you making this tough decision. I think you brought us some great candidates to, to take a look at, and sincerely, sincerely appreciate all of that. So when I took a look through the resume process, the online interviews, you know, the, their own, their own filming of answering questions, the face-to-face interviews, my rankings changed quite, quite a bit throughout the process. And really, the, the thing I'm looking for is stability, experience, and in the interview process, just the, their overall, the way they present themselves, does that, does that feel like it's a fit for North St. Paul? Because we do have a tight-knit community, we have a, for the most part, a senior team who's very entrenched. And I did take a look at the, the feedback from the, the other group that interviewed as well, and it made it very difficult. And I, my pick is Brian Frandl. And the reasoning for that is that the onboarding time, he's, he's ready and prepared to step in. We aren't going to have some of the onboarding that we had, that we experienced with, with our last city manager. Already has developed the trust of his peers and staff, and, and I believe that of council. So that learning curve has already been removed as well. Twenty-two years in this city has proven stability, and just lots of great comments on, on fit and leadership from, from the rest. It makes it tough because Nicole is my number two. And I, I truly believe she's an awesome, awesome rock star. Just, it's, it's that, it, it's tough. It's a really tough call. So I don't want to ever go last, again.
So I, it sounds like we do have a consensus, not a full consensus, but a consensus. And so the motion would be to take formal action, or the motion is to offer the position of the North St. Paul city manager to and negotiate the terms of employment with Brian Frandl. So there's a motion, motion, or, so moved by Councilmember Peterson. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
Nay.
Motion carries. So at this time, are we able to negotiate maybe his salary at this time? Or, because I know in the past, you, we had two council members talk with you, but we, I believe we know Brian's, kind of his wage right now and where he would sit with the city manager?
Yeah, so I had a chance to look that up. So currently, right now, Mr. Frandl is at $136,000 in $11 as electric director. As the interim, he was compensated at $150,000 is what his interim wage would be.
What is?
The position was posted at from 124, 113 to 155, 06.
At the top of the?
155, 106 would be the top range. And Mr. Stark was at $150,000.
At what?
At $150,000 was Mr. Stark. There really isn't probably much discussion on benefits and things like that because, you know, Mr. Frandl would already be into the system with years of service and, and things like that from calculation of sick and leave and vacation and.
Does it differ because of being unioned or not-unioned?
It would be a non-union position.
Right.
Correct.
So would there be a switch in being unioned and then becoming not-unioned?
He'd, he'd lose his collective bargaining and some of those things that would go with a union position, but in theory, I mean, the years of service would carry over. Those union years of service would be kind of no different than a non-union, he just would lose some of that. But they also has the ability then to negotiate his own contract, which he would not be part of a collective bargaining group.
Thank you.
Any thoughts on, please? Go ahead, councilmember.
I'm sorry, Terry.
Councilmember call.
To, to build on Lisa's comment, I guess, question is comparing what our prior city manager came on board at compared to where Brian currently is from vacation pay. Do, I mean, where is he on, on vacation pay? Does it, does it carry over? Is it greater to the last position that we had? Is it less than the last, what we offered?
I don't have those, that information, but I would have the, I would just buy his, I don't know, I can't remember if you guys are PTO or you sick in vacation, but either way, you'd have an accrual rate that you would have. That accrual rate, in theory, should not really change, in a sense, if you're in the union or non-union, in a sense. So I, I would not see Mr. Frandl going backwards, per se, but I don't see him also, I, I'd see that, I guess, as basically a wash from what he would have. If he had 23 years of service, you'd have 23 years of service. He's probably topped out, in a sense, of what the maximum accrual would be on that. So being somebody that's been here that long, I can't imagine your step system having something over 23 years in it. Probably tops out like a 20 years or something, I would imagine.
But what is that when it tops out at 20 years? Is it four weeks? Is it five weeks?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I do not know that. But if the, if the point is, would it matter if he's in, in the union or not in the union anymore? I mean, it just, it is what it would be, in a sense, as if he was in.
In the union, you're out of the union, it doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is how many vacation days does he currently have? And what did John Stark have when we brought him on board? That's, that, those are the, the two pieces I'm trying to figure out.
I misunderstood your question, yeah.
Union, non-union, it doesn't matter, I'm just trying to figure out.
I apologize, it was, it was, Mr. Stark was given 20 years.
Twenty years of vacation?
Twenty years, 20 years of vacation. He's given credit for 20 years of experience for calculating that. So that equated to... I don't have the, I, I don't have your scale in front of you, but John was given basically 20 years of experience coming in. So I guess what I would recommend.
Probably not a whole lot of, not a lot of difference.
Not a lot of difference. I would, I would say then the contract is be given credit for what's existing right, what he has existing right now, which would be 23 years.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Do we have all the information to be able to make that decision tonight?
I guess it depends what other information you would need. You, and I'm not trying to rush us by zero means, but you do have a council packet going out tomorrow, and if Mr. Frandl is open to the terms of this contract, you could have this at your next council meeting. Otherwise, you could just wait for your next council meeting after that. And that's the caveat that, you know, Mr. Frandl's is.
Which basically just the same contract as.
Mr. Stark.
Mr. Stark had, besides the wage, is what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, basically would be exactly what he has now in a sense accrual, so he'd be credited for 23 years of service. So he'd be credited for his existing, that he's built up so far. So then another discussion would be, I guess, is the salary component of it. Traditionally, and not to say this is, every city is different, traditionally, there's a, a minimum of 5% separation between the positions. So in other words, if you brought somebody else on, it's, if you're the, in a sense, the, the, the top of the, the organizational chart, it's kind of hard to supervise people that are making more money than you. So Mr. Frandl, if he was not in the position, you know, he was at $136, $11. So if he did 5% above that, that'd bring it at 142,812. $142,812 would be a 5% separation.
Can you repeat the interim?
Sure, and the interim was 150. 150. So you brought, basically, from my understanding, Mr. Stark, I mean, where, where Mr. Stark left at was what you paid Mr. Frandl to be your interim.
In my mind, it was like 146, it's like a $10,000 increase from his 136. You're right around that 146. Would it be kind of weird that he went backwards from the interim? Because interim, to me, is kind of.
It's still interim, I mean, it's not like that's 150 year-round, I mean, it's interim while you're doing that job. So you could, I guess you could look at it multiple ways. I don't think there's anything that's.
If we do the 146, and then if he unbox at that, we can always negotiate.
He's at 150 in his interim role. The prior, the predecessor was at 150. He's aware of that. I would ask for 150, that's a 10% bump from where he currently is today. I, I would, I would just keep it at, at 150 and not, not, yeah.
Same.
Okay. Scott?
That'd be correct. So what, the next step would be is I will, I'll contact Mr. Frandl, let him know that he, he was selected at that wage, along with all the, his current sick leave, all those years of service being carried over. And then for him to, if he's in a position of making a decision, we can get this as early as tomorrow, get that on the council agenda. I will email, email him out tonight, draft of the agreement that was used for Mr. Stark that the attorney did look at in the past. And then this would be at your next council meeting. And if Mr. Frandl needs more time, I'll communicate that to all of you, and then this would have to wait to a future meeting. And also, we'll make sure, I will also personally call all the other candidates to let them know. So that is correct, as Councilmember Thorson said, then the next action would actually be at the, either your next council meeting, the council meeting afterwards, if we can get the terms of the agreement into a document that can be forwarded for you.
You'd work with the city attorney.
Yeah, yeah, I will send it to him also. He, he was the one that did the final okay and things on the last one, so I don't know if anything's changed between now and then, but by all means, any contract, I'll, I'll send to him just for his, making sure that nothing has changed since the last time.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, council, for getting through this again. Hopefully, hopefully you won't have to see Mark again. So does this one year go another year then? So does this one year go another year then?
Somebody actually asked that. And I said, hopefully, we don't even want to create a self-fulfilling prophecy because it won't happen. But in the rare event it did, we would just have to sit down and have a conversation because there's nothing that we have to really work from. But I'm not anticipating that. And unfortunately, you had to experience it, but, you know.
And you want all this stuff?
I'll, I'll take that and we just, we keep it on file.
Okay. All right, so another, nothing else, motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Peterson. Taken by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. We are adjourned.